The Republic of Wisconsin. One nation, unbroken. In this hope of liberty and justice for all.
Did you just mess it up? Okay, good job.
I didn't think you were gonna announce. It was me.
I did it too. Once when I was all alone. Time video now. Yep. There we go. All right, where am I here? Get rid of finance. That was finance. Hang on. Too many times. All right, meeting minutes of approval. Roll call. Oh. See, she's got me all clustered now. I don't know what I'm doing. Roll call.
Austin Cool here.
Charles Cool here.
This is me.
Thomas here.
Wade here.
Huzzler here.
And Sarah is out with a sick child. Meeting minutes approval of December 7th.
And they're separate, so you're not in your packet.
On the table.
Charles Cool motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 7th.
Austin Cool second.
Austin and Charlie Cool. Oh, we'll do it the other way. Charlie Cool, Austin Cool. Approval of the meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Situations input. Seeing none. Meeting summaries. Since the last council. None. Reports and presentations. Are we ready to roll with the league municipality? Lana. Are we ready to roll? That's okay. That's all right. Hello.
Hello. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you too.
Nice, Jeff.
I know. I'm just admiring all the little presents on there.
I was getting ready this morning. I was like, should I do this in the morning or not? I think so.
I got my little bells. We're good to go. All right. Twenty twenty four insurance renewals. It is yours. You're just dying to talk. Yep.
Yeah, no. Let's, uh, let's talk.
Let's do it.
So, um, overall, I tell you that, you know, the league insurance, we've, we've stayed around like a two percent increase. Property had some inflation factors, maybe seven percent. But really what we're looking at this year with, with, with the city of Waterloo is it's the exposure piece. So there's more value in vehicles. There's more police officers. There's more payroll. There's more population. And when that happens, you know, just like adding a car to your household or, or moving into a bigger house or having more kids, the costs go up. And, um, that's what we're looking at this year. So I would tell you, and it sounds like possibly talking to Lana that we do have some corrections to make in, in those exposures. What we're showing right now is an increased projected payroll for the twenty twenty four calendar year of about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That does two things. That affects your public officials liability coverage premium as well as, and more importantly and more dramatically, is the workers' comp premium.
And the corrections that he's referring to is that when I sent the twenty four budget in there, that included additional firefighter. It included what? The police department. Those, and they're not there right now. So we need to bring those down onto the payroll.
Yeah, and ultimately the way workers' comp works is that Lana makes her best guess on what the payrolls are gonna be. And then at the end of the year, we audit it. And we say, okay, let's true it up. If you overestimated, you get a refund. If you underestimated, you get a charge.
We did get a refund this year.
Yeah, we were a little bit over, so.
Where's our mod factor?
What's that?
Where's our mod factor?
Mod factor's great. You know, so we're keeping our claims low. We are.
I'm surprised. Usually you have a big, thick report with all the different.
Right. Again, that's miscommunication with this because when I came in last year, I came in half into this. So Mike had done some of it.
Right.
And then I did part of it. And then I'm not sure how the book, it was probably done electronically. So I can forward that all to you. But again, it was just when it started and where I ended with it.
Yeah, there were usually many pages to it.
Yeah, it's a whole policy.
Fifty-five pages.
Right, yeah. Basically with all property listings, all those things in there. Um, like you said, the one thing we have to maybe make some adjustments to. But again, it would be audited, but is I projected on the higher end and I probably should have, because we don't have those employees in this department. So, so that should change it slightly.
Okay, so your mod is still really good. It's below one. You know, we say a one is an average. You're at a point nine-three.
Can you humor us what the mod means? Because some people do.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but it is up twelve points, so that costs about five thousand dollars of premium. So the way workers' comp works, very high level, is you take your payrolls, depending on what you do, whether you're police or DPW or whatever, you take that times a state set rate. We don't control that at the state. The Workers' Compensation Rating Bureau controls that. So you take your payrolls, times your rates, you get a premium. That's what it is. So when payrolls, when payrolls go up, premiums go up. I can tell you states that rates are down, so that's good news. So there's a little offset there. You get that premium and then you get this thing called a mod. And that's developed by the Workers' Compensation Rating Bureau on an average of three years of claims. Claims go up, your mod goes up. They would say, if you're average, they say you're gonna be at a one. You could have a big credit or you could have a big charge. I mean, there's some accounts in the state that, you know, are at a two and because they've had a lot of claims. You guys are below a one, so that's still, you know, if I'd rate you, you're gonna be. Last year you might have been at an A because you were in that, you were below that. You were like a point eight.
And then the comment with the claims where the increase, it was mainly payroll. He said that did not affect that, so.
About five thousand dollars in mod.
Oh, that, but it wasn't as, as much as.
Yeah. I mean, your total work comp increase is about eighteen thousand dollars. Five thousand is from the mod. The rest is payroll.
Yeah.
And that's, like I said, that's all a, a state set formula. And, um, which you can control there with that premium. All municipalities in the state of Wisconsin pay the same rates. Just the payrolls and the mod changes that. Is that it? Good explanation.
Yeah. Good note. We got the cyber insurance now.
Yeah, that was a big conversation last year. So that was about a five thousand dollar offset because we got into the league program. But other than that, you know, it's, uh, I would say that, you know, we were facing a, probably a closer to thirty, twenty-nine thousand dollar increase. But because cyber came down, we're at about twenty-four thousand dollar increase. The largest part of that is workers' comp.
Yeah.
And that's about eighteen thousand dollars.
All right. So Lana will share the big packet with everybody. Ready to go from there? Anybody have any questions? Yes.
There's always one to end up back.
That's all right.
That is, when you send it to the city, I'm not sure what the big packet is, but that's broke down for every department.
Once we approve the premiums, then I do an allocation with Lana. And then, yeah, you can see which departments.
So when it's done, then we get something.
Yeah.
Same as last year. That's not gonna change. It's just.
See, I don't do it, so that's why I'm asking.
Oh, no, Joy won't. Joyce.
Yeah, we got a spreadsheet with a bunch of tabs to send out.
And that's why we cleaned up all the vehicles, make sure they're in the right departments and everybody's being billed correctly. Because that was an issue from which last year. And so I think we've got a good handle on that part. So it's not any problems.
Ascent, yes.
Yeah, so I think we have worked on getting that handled. So I think we're okay there.
Good. All right. Anything else? Short and sweet?
Your policy meeting is January first.
Okay.
So I don't know if usually we approve it or not. Approve it subject to some payroll changes or how, how did you want to do that?
Yeah, we don't have anything in front of us to actually approve. Is it a resolution we do?
It's a recommendation.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a resolution.
I don't really do it usually. I think it is. That's fine. So, yeah, what's your pleasure then?
And then the audit that we do in, audit in February, correct? There's one.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Can we talk about police also? You know, we, we just talked about that. The police, we did have on this report that we do from an underwriting standpoint. We had eight and a half listed.
Which is on that sheet I gave you at half the.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's.
Eight point two five, yeah.
Um, we just talked in the hallway and it seems like what we should really do is rather than projecting what our police count FTE might be in the future. We don't know that's gonna happen. So what, as a league, we're gonna accept wherever you're at now.
Okay.
You don't have to project that. So because we are at seven and then we have two very part timers, I think we can get that down to like seven point five or seven point three. And that's gonna provide some additional savings there because our police professional liability, you know, went up two thousand dollars. So if we can get that down a little bit, that, that'll help us.
Okay.
Then we need to fire the person that isn't projected for that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Because we're not hired for any of that yet.
So that will also, so it'll, it'll come down.
So that could reduce that payroll?
Yes.
But then if you do hire, then your payroll will go up. And when you're audited at the end of the year, then your premium could go up.
Then you make that adjustment at the end of the year, whether we overpaid or.
Or is it best way?
Okay.
And, you know, you go with your best guess and kind of way things gonna happen.
I went with the projected.
I like refunds too.
I think we're definitely gonna be hiring that position.
Yeah, both of them.
Yeah.
You said my best guess and that's what I did, so.
Yeah, so if that's what you're projecting.
So you're looking for a recommendation to approve?
Yes.
The twenty twenty four insurance renewal with the league?
Yep.
Now let's make that motion.
Wade will second it.
Motion by Thomas, second by Wade to approve the twenty twenty four insurance renewals. Obviously, there's been some discussion about some updates and some changes and Lana will take care of that. And hopefully we'll get a refund at the end of the year with the other one. Roll call.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wade, yes.
Huzzler, yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
You as well. Merry Christmas. All right, meeting summaries since last council. I'm not sure why we have it.
This is because I wanted to.
Okay, good. Just making sure I'm not reading everything wrong.
I'm just gonna do everything on this one, so it's often. I wanna, I wanted to go on a positive note here. Thank you.
All right, meeting summary. Well, fourteen finance. That doesn't make any sense. Wasn't it just tonight's finance?
Yours tonight.
All righty then. There we go. It's the twenty first finance. All on the agenda?
It's all on the agenda tonight.
And, uh, the only thing we did talk about was the tender. That's not on the agenda. That was just an update to the, thank you.
It was not an update to, to fire.
Yeah, because it wasn't on here for an approval.
Because we didn't, we didn't approve it finance.
We had an action.
It was just.
It was just an update, yeah. I wasn't sure if that was gonna be noted on here, which is no big deal. That's why I asked if you wanted to talk about it. All right, consent agenda items are in your packets. There is nothing for parks, Humane Society, or Shingle, just in case you're all looking for it. Because it's not there. We don't have it? Which, that's pretty normal or, uh, something about, uh, Humane Society.
Charles Cool will, motion to accept the consent agenda items.
Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Austin Cool to approve consent agenda items. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Barry, do you guys never put your ending time on your meetings? You always do the starting time. You never put an ending time. I just thought that was funny. It's the first time I read it. I'm like, well, when did you end? Is it still going? I'm just curious.
I certainly can put it on there.
It used to be. I saw some old ones that had it that I thought it was interesting. It's like, why do we not talk about when we stop and stop? I didn't know if that was a legal thing, you know?
Our secretary I'll talk to.
Get on, get on that person.
Not, the fact that the ending time, no.
Just didn't know, because we haven't started ending on everything we do, but I just noticed it wasn't on yours and I thought that was interesting.
We'll work on that.
You do that. Bring it up as a complaint. All right, recommendations of boards, committees and commissions. Public health ordinance two seventy-eight dash five in your packet. Loud noises. Who wants to take that? Richard? Or Chad?
I'm not in safety.
That'd be. It's a safety. It's a loud thing. Oh, there you go. That's noise. There you go. My bad.
In your pack, you should have a copy of ordinance two seventy-eight dash five, which is loud, unnecessary noise. There are two changes to the ordinance under B three. We are requesting the change in the sound amplifying equipment can only be used between nine AM and five PM to read to seven AM to seven PM. But that brings it in compliance with all other, uh,
events.
Events that we have going on.
Because I thought that was a completely habit with the DPW, the sound that they were doing at seven o'clock. And I thought that was a thing we could.
This is different. This is sound amplifying.
Amplifying, okay.
Was it like fourth of July at the park?
Or the track events?
Just the announcements, things happening in town.
Right. Fourth of July gets a special event permit, which has their hours in it.
We are in.
Which trumps the ordinance? It's like a variance to it.
It's a variance to the ordinance, yeah. It's a one-time variance.
Okay.
All right.
I would hate to write an ordinance where you can have sound amplifying equipment until one AM.
That would be bad, yeah.
By permit, if it's permitted.
If it's permitted, yeah.
That doesn't spell that out here, but that's what you're saying.
Well, we can add that if you want to add that language.
Unless otherwise permitted for a special event.
It would definitely clean it up.
You want to add that language?
Otherwise, someone could say like on the fourth of July at seven o'clock.
The ordinance says you can.
By ordinance, it says you can.
Okay, so you want to add the wording?
Unless it's low or permitted applications, I guess. I don't know how you use it.
Unless otherwise permitted?
Yes.
You know, McKays don't, they get a permit too?
McKay, for what?
For their bike rights?
McKay doesn't do bike, you can track.
Oh, track.
Yeah, they do get a special permit.
They do. And that would be a permitted thing then.
So then they can have their, go on anytime they want.
Right.
But the permit would define the times. Yeah, they can't just do it twenty-four hours. The permits would have to be approved per the times in the permit for the special events, basically.
Because Trek does whole stuff up there that's exclusive to their property and they don't get a, need a permit for it. And they use sound amplifying, so this is covering that.
Okay.
And to remove section four, the wording, no sound. Advertising shall be permit, be permitted on Sundays or legal holidays. Again, we have events that are taking place on Sundays and holidays. Trek would be one example. There are others. In the park. So eliminating that, eliminating sub four. So Thomas make a motion to approve the change to ordinance two seventy-eight to dash five loud, unnecessary noise with those changes suggested by Oliver Gubel.
Griffin, a second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Griffin to approve ordinance two seventy-eight dash five with the additional wording put in there. Any, do we send this to the lawyer every time before we close?
No, I didn't send.
Okay, good. I was just curious. Very minor.
It's a very minor change.
You're not a prophet at all? Just ask one question?
Nope. That's a good question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, parks, purchase of radio equipment from finance, Tim?
Uh, finance tabled it and I'm gonna make a motion to table this until there's further discussion at finance.
Charles Cool, second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie Cool to table the radio equipment for the parks department. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carry. Uh, finance, again, Tim, you are on.
Thomas make a motion to approve the November twenty twenty-three financial statements payroll in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents. General dispersments of one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. And the clerk treasurer's reports, which are on file at City Hall and will be on the municipal website as soon as that is repaired.
Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Tim Thomas, second by Austin Cool to approve the November financials. Roll call.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wade, yes.
Huzzler, yes.
Motion carried. On DPW sonics.
For those of you that aren't aware, two furnaces malfunctioned at the Department of Public Works. Both need a replacement. And of course, if that happened in the middle of winter, when, uh, to keep the water from freezing. They have a temporary service going to keep it so that we don't have the issue of it freezing. Chad went and had Johnson's plumbing and heating. Take a look at the units. They're not repairable. They have a proposal to replace both units in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Thomas make a motion to approve the, the proposal from Johnson's in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. They'll be able to replace both units next week, you said, Chad?
Yeah, he's gonna come in, hopefully next week, one of the three days that we're open. Gonna replace it. Not, I gotta come in Friday and open up for him or whatever. Get it done.
What kind are you looking at?
Resonant molding, you know, it's one sixty-five thousand BTU or one forty-five thousand BTU to replace the ones that we currently have in our building.
Are these the same kind that you have right now or is it the same?
Yeah, they're the same ones, same size, just twenty years later.
Did we have in your budget for something else for next year? But it wasn't this, right?
No, we got.
You're probably thinking of municipal.
Well, I know we have one for here. For some reason, I was thinking we still had something.
I had, I had two furnaces replaced in the truck shop.
This is.
This, January twenty twenty-three, yeah.
That's how it goes. All right, I have a motion from Thomas. Do I have a second?
Griffin, second.
Motion by Tim Thomas, second by Ron Griffin to approve the DPW furnace. Any other questions? Roll call.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wade, yes.
Huzzler, yes.
And he'll be using this just out of his budget from this year. Uh, motion carried. Associated appraisal contract, which we were so happy to do this. So I will let Tim continue with this.
I'm gonna plug the genie.
Yes.
So, uh, for the last two years, we have not been compliant with the state. Actually, it's been like five years. After two years, you get a notice every year. Um, the third year, you need to become compliant, which will be next year, or the state will come in and take care of your complacency issue and do it for you. And it's very costly. So we talked to Associated Appraisal while they were working on a new contract for us. The new contract came in, um, at nineteen thousand for the first year. No, eighteen thousand. I say that every time. And then eight, was it eighteen-five? Yep, and then nineteen thousand. So, um, that is the contract. It did go up. We used to pay nine thousand, so it increased substantially. Uh, also, we will be doing the, it's called the interim market. It helps us get current. They use, it's, it's computer data. They don't go around to the houses. But they have to do like a full reassessment for the city. But it's all computer based on information that they have. So that will be an additional fifteen thousand dollars, which would be paid. Um, we just, he said that we could do it over the three years of the contract. So it would increase our contract by five thousand more each year to have that done. Uh, it will make everything a lot later next year. We will have our open book in our meetings more like September than, um, April, May due to the fact that they will wait for the, the numbers to come out from the state to make sure that we're hitting our numbers and that we're gonna be good for the year. So we're compliant. We, we discussed this, we had a call with them at Associated. I've also had some calls with Accurate Appraisal. Um, Associated was considerably less than I was witnessing from other places. So it's something we have to do. There's no choice because we're, um, so far, we're at like eighty-one percent and we need to be between ninety and a hundred and ten. And we're not close, so.
To no fault of our own?
No.
So DOR, when he was talking about that, that the state sets the rates. I mean, that's how the world works. We're, we're set by what they do, so. Yeah, so unfortunately, we gotta go through this again. So we're hitting contingency right out of the gate. We haven't gotten to twenty twenty-four yet. So any questions on that that you would like to know more? All right.
It's been, what, no, we're on the phone?
Oh, God, we were on the phone for quite a while, yeah. It was crazy.
Can he give you any assessment of what that'll do? I mean, I know the mill rate and stuff we're gonna adjust, about what that'll do for an actual payment to somebody's taxes?
Well, it's no different than the, the last one. Some, some people went up, some people went down. This is just, I don't expect it really to be a whole lot of change to it. I mean, we're talking dollars, not hundreds.
Typically, the values will go up and the mill rates should come down. And that's what happened in the, that twenty-one year that we saw. what happened in the, that twenty-one year, we saw, that was my first year, so I remember how much it dropped, but we did the math, and basically, I was, I used my own property, and I was pretty much the same based on that, it's just that, the two balance out typically, typically.
Right, but your commercial and your residential now are gonna be switched, and when you did it with yours, was it everybody was the same up and down, and the commercial and residential were the same? At this time, they're gonna be different, so I'm asking, is a lot of that's gonna be shifted to residential, when you adjust the mill rate?
No, the commercial was overrated.
Right, so this is gonna come down.
So it's gonna come down.
That has to go to residential.
Well, it already came down last year.
No, it doesn't, they don't, the two aren't based on each other.
Yeah.
So both of them will be adjusted the same then this time?
Again, yes.
Okay.
Yes, but that's why they're gonna wait till August, when the state gives us the numbers, we're gonna make sure that we're not overvaluing or undervaluing, so we hit the mark.
Yeah.
So they're gonna still do their due diligence, the appraisers say, we, we do things based on the market, where the state just, I don't know what, where they get their numbers from, how they do that, but everybody's at the mercy of what they give you. So, we're, we're out of compliance. It's very confusing and annoying. Like he said, we were on the phone for over an hour, just going, oh my God, okay, because we just, just did this in twenty-one. But if you, people will get notices, they'll get information.
But twenty-one is different, just so everybody knows, there's not people coming to your property.
Correct.
They won't wanna come in and out, it's just basically, they take all their computer information, and then they base it on that, and they work the numbers that way, so.
But they're still gonna send information out.
Yes, they have to.
So there'll be more information coming, and hopefully they'll try and spell it out as clear as we possibly can, but.
I think it should reflect in what your market rate is set on your tax bill, and receive that in December twenty-four. If it's reassessed, it probably will increase because we're low right now, so, not to alarm anybody, but that doesn't necessarily mean your taxes are going up.
Right, definitely not. Okay, any questions? So again, this will be a fourteen thousand dollar increase, we will be hitting contingency right out of the gate.
Thomas, make a motion to approve the contract with Associated Appraisal Consultants, including will be appendix A with the payment scheduled of the fifteen thousand to be paid over three years, five thousand a year.
Final from the attorney. Oh, yes.
And in final review by the attorney.
Yeah, there's some.
There's some language changes, it does not affect the.
No.
Scope of services or the numbers.
Griffin, a second?
Mark, yeah.
Motion by Thomas, seconded by Griffin to approve the contract pending the information from the lawyer. Roll call?
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Lawyer, yes.
Hasla, yes.
Motion carried. All right, lateral entry into the PD, this isn't the first time we have done this, so, Tim?
We have the notation where we can go into closed session, I don't see any need to not go into closed session in finance, so, if somebody feels it's necessary, I recommend we don't go into closed session. I don't feel a need.
No, there, there's nothing new, this is the contract.
Okay.
We've done this before, it's in open minutes, so.
This is, the chief is asking permission to do lateral entry to the Waterloo Police Department, similar to what was done last year. Last year, there was a five thousand dollar signing bonus, twenty-five hundred dollars, given upon hiring, with the remaining twenty-five hundred dollars paid at the end of one year. The other items that would have been in the lateral entry packet last year are now part of the place union contract, and takes, does not require any action by us at all, because that we approved already, when we approved the union contract. So what he is asking for is the permission to offer a five thousand dollar signing bonus to encourage qualified candidates to apply for our positions. There's a shortage of qualified candidates out there, and hopefully this will help motivate somebody, beat their interest to apply for our open position. We had one officer, Nathan Cullen, it was, last day was nineteenth, I believe, yes. Last day that he worked was the nineteenth, so we are looking, or the police department is looking. So I'll make that motion to approve the lateral entry into the Waterloo Police Department with a five thousand dollar signing bonus to be paid, twenty-five hundred dollars upfront and twenty-five hundred dollars at the completion of one year.
Charles Cool, second.
Motion by Thomas, seconded by Charlie Cool to approve the lateral entry with the five thousand dollar signing bonus.